Good afternoon, everybody. Today is May 20th and it is going into 4:00 PM. So we can go ahead and do our roll call and call to order, please.
Mayor Shirley.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Okay, all those who are able, if we can stand and state the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, and maybe during the moment of silence, just let everyone know there was a pretty bad tornado down in Oklahoma City today. That's about an F4, maybe higher, that just hit the area. Keep them in your thoughts, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start today off with the words and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina. Christina Franklin with the Public Works Department will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, stormwater and levee systems, solid waste collection and disposal operations, municipal fleet maintenance services, water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, engineering and inspection, public facilities, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and facilities each and every day, as well as in times of emergency and community disaster, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Barb V. Shirley, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contribution which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 20th day of May, 2013. Barb V. Shirley, Mayor.
Do you have any events planned for the week?
We do. We're really excited. We have, obviously, the proclamation that you signed. We had a news release that went out to the public so they could be aware of what was happening. Throughout the week, we're handing out drinks and treats to all of our public works employees. And then, on Thursday, we're having a barbecue luncheon where we have our annual award ceremony where we can celebrate our employees.
Great. That'll be good for them. Good. And I have your signed proclamation, so you can come up and get it.
Item 3.2, the day of May 25th, 2013, as Poppy Day in the city of Salina. Sue Herman, Vice President of the American Legion Auxiliary, will read the proclamation.
Sue?
Hello. It's Poppy Day coming up, May 25th, Memorial Weekend, celebration of our veterans. Our Poppy Day proclamation, whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, whereas those who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, whereas a nation of peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. I therefore, Barb Shirley, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2013, as Poppy Day, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. In witness thereto, I have set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of Salina, May 25th, 2013. Barb Shirley.
Thank you. And do you have events planned for this week?
We do. It's gonna be a busy weekend.
It always is.
We will be distributing poppies on Saturday, and I believe the VFW also will be distributing Memorial Day, we have the memorial services. The VFW will be at Gibson Hill. The American Legion will be at Roseland, and from there, we go to the War Memorial where we will have services there. So, gonna be a busy weekend.
I have your proclamation. If you can come up, and I'll give that to you. Are they gonna be at Dylan's and at the mall handing them out like they were last year?
We try. We get permission.
Oh, okay. I know, I always see everybody at different locations. There you go. Thank you so much, Sue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Moving on to citizen forums. If there's anybody that would like to come up and talk to the city commission about any item that is not on the agenda, you could go ahead and come up now.
Hello. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tracy Sin. I'm in at 340 and a half, South Connecticut. I would like to thank Tony Dung from the Martinelli Little Italy Place and also the Santa Cruz Burritos for getting, set up a program for younger kids that wanting to be a chef or wanting to be in the retail, anything that has to do with food. I had a guy who's like 15, a little kid from southeast Salina, and he got on board with these Santa Cruz Burritos and working for his program as a working program because he wanted to be a chef and to have his restaurant. And I just wanted to recognize Martinelli, Little Italy, and Santa Cruz Burrito for having those program for him to have his American dream to be a chef, open his own restaurant. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tracy. Is there any other citizens that would like to come up and share anything that's not on the agenda or ask any questions? We have no public hearings or items scheduled for certain times. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve amendments of May 13th, 2013. Item 6.2, resolution number 137008, appointing members to the Business Improvement District Board of Advisors and the Convention and Tourism Committee.
Is there anything a Commissioner would like removed or amended from the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All in favor of the consent agenda? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. We have no development business, so we'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, resolution number 137007, initiating proceedings for the ninth and cloud intersection improvements.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. This resolution simply provides the authority for proceeding with the ninth and cloud improvements. I believe the design was approved last week, or two weeks ago, I guess. The city of Salina has received safety improvement funding to assist with this project in the amount of $350,000. Total project is estimated at $1.1 million, and that is the maximum amount of the bonds that are authorized by the resolution also. Really, not too much more to say about it, except just gets the ball rolling and make sure that we can pay the bills when they come due.
That's a pretty important part of it.
Yeah. Can be.
Any questions for staff or for Mr. Franz?
I have a question. I don't know if you know the answer to this, Rod, but normally, I've noticed in infrastructure projects that the percent that's included from other sources is usually a greater percentage of the project. In this case, it seems to be the reverse. Is there a reason for that?
Because the project the state funded, I guess, was smaller. It's actually a 90-10 project. They pay 90% of the eligible cost, but they have maximums also, and I'm presuming that $350,000 was a maximum that they would provide with this particular project.
Mr. Franz, you mentioned earlier that the design and so on was approved a couple of weeks ago, is that?
I believe that's the case, yeah.
I don't recall that. I recall the right-of-way stuff that we did last week.
I'm sorry. It was, I'm sorry, I corrected myself.
Okay.
It was the decision to proceed with the right-of-way acquisition.
Yes, that's correct. It was a right-of-way acquisition.
I misspoke.
Will we be having a meeting beyond this on the design? I do know that it was at a study session back in October, but do you know any of the specifics? Specifically, I've got a question on the median portion of the design.
Yeah, Commissioners, I think we can. I don't know that it was anticipated. I think that originally, when the various concepts were thrown out, it was to the prior commission, so we can certainly try to wedge it in somewhere or even do an overview in this meeting if we can't squeeze it into a study session, whatever you'd prefer would be fine.
For me, just an overview is fine. I just had a couple of questions on the, I know we looked, last time, it looked like it was all painted. The traffic ways were painted, but apparently, there's a raised median, and just wanted to kind of get an idea what the details were. No raised median?
Yeah, I believe there are several steps left to this project. This is one of those projects that if I am correct, the KDOT will actually be implementing the project and we will be managing the contract, and we will be paying them, and they'll be doing the contracting, and normally, on those projects, we are given the opportunity to concur or not in their decisions.
Yeah, and generally, before there's any bid solicitation, that's when we work through the, most of the design process, and we're into kind of the final, that's the best opportunity to have you look at it and say, "Yeah, we're good with that. That matches the concept," or if you have any concerns, whatever. Gives us a little bit of time to work through those.
Okay, 'cause the resolution here kind of hasn't stated in there to include the construction of a median on Cloud Street, so.
That was the original concept, yeah.
Okay.
Right. And for the authorization, for the authorization regarding these funds, it would include the full aspect of that. So, but that doesn't necessarily lock you into a design. If there's a change in the design, the state would need to also be in concurrence with that in order for us to receive the funding, but that's assuming there might be some change. If not, it doesn't affect anything here. Just make sure we get the funding partnership lined up.
I have one other question, too, on the, related to general obligation bonds. I understand there's a level of bonding that you try to maintain, like steady states in a way?
Pretty much, yes.
Is there an ebb and flow to this thing so that there's more capacity at certain times than at other times, or do you try to keep it so that it's within a narrow range?
We try to target a mill levy that is relatively stable and try to schedule projects so that that is the result that we see. And the way things stand now, the way the capital improvement program is laid out, we are pretty much at that level for the next several years, and then the projected mill levy drops off as bonded projects pay out. And at that point, you know, we can add additional projects. So, if your question is, do we try to maintain sort of a steady state? Yes, we do.
I was gonna say, Commissioners, for clarification, Rod's referring to a mill levy, because what he, in essence, does is there's a payment for the bonds, to pay for, make the annual payment on the bonds, and convert that to a mill levy for purposes of visualizing that compared to use a mill levy for other things. And it's probably about six, isn't it, somewhere?
It is, yeah. It sits at about six miles.
Yeah. So, it gives you, one mill generates approximately, what, number?
$350,000.
Okay. So, that gives you an idea, then, of the approximate annual payment to keep that fairly consistent each year in our budget with regards to paying off that debt service on the general obligation bonds. And we do like to keep that debt service very consistent, just simply because our budget really doesn't vary that much. And quite honestly, whether it's that, whether it's cash capital, whatever it is, one thing can, you know, a capital can affect operations, or debt can affect cash capital, it's just, all those things relate, so it's just a budget stability approach.
Is that fairly comparable with other cities of our size in terms of?
I would say the practice is very, very quite widely. You know, I think most cities would like to maintain a steady mill levy, but you've got a plan quite a ways ahead to do that, and I know several where that has not been the case.
Yeah, and Commissioner, you see different styles. There are communities that may say, "Okay, these are the projects we want to do, and we don't have in our budget, therefore, we're gonna increase our mill levy." And in essence, they'll increase it specifically for that, and that'll even out, and that'll be fine. What we're talking about is basically what we can afford within our annual budget, so it doesn't, it's not an increase, it doesn't create for you the need to have an increase in a mill levy or anything. It's just a way of visualizing that amount. So, you could still say, "We want to do more in something, and we want to increase the mill levy at any budget time that you'd like to do that." That gives you that opportunity. But, yeah, communities are different all over.
You know, we have been fortunate here in the past, as we've had a portion of the sales tax that was dedicated to capital improvements, and also was authorized to help stabilize the debt service, and we have used that over the last five or six years to help us maintain a stable debt service, at least as far as it affects the property tax, so.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 13-7007, initiating proceedings for the ninth and cloud intersection improvements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
Item 8.2, approve change order number one for the sanitary sewer improvements, project number 122933.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The first item that I want to talk about is to give you a little information about the background in our wastewater collection system. A good share of our system dates back to well over 60 years old, and some prior to the 1900s. And we have roughly 228 miles of sewer line, over 4,700 manholes, and 60 wastewater pump stations. The project that I'm here to talk about today was a sanitary sewer improvement project that consisted of replacing some sanitary sewer force main. Basically, when it's a force main, it's a line where the wastewater is pumped through the line as opposed to flowing by gravity, removing and replacing sanitary sewer gravity main, and reconnecting sewer connections from properties, and installing 12 new sanitary sewer manholes. Change order number one has three basic items. The first item is relocating a water line at Franklin and Broadway. The water and sewer system in this area was installed in 1952, and we were replacing this section of sewer line, and when we excavated, we found that the water line made a short zag there and was virtually right on top of the sewer line for about 60 feet. Two problems. First, we couldn't excavate down below to get to the sewer line. Typically, water lines are about four and a half feet, five foot deep, so we had to relocate it to allow us to install the new sewer main. And second, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment has a requirement that you must have 10 feet of horizontal separation between water and sewer lines. And basically, the line was relocated to clear that, and the total cost for this was Items two and three pertain to pump station number six. It's located at the intersection of Norton and Cloud, and it was installed in 1952, so you're gonna hear a lot about infrastructure that's in that 50- to 60- 70-year range over the next few months. And basically, to give you a little information about pump stations, the 60 that we have, roughly one-third are submersible stations where the pumps are located in a wet well, and they sit right down in the wastewater and directly pump out of that. And the other two-thirds are the type of pump station that has this wet well area like you see here, then a dry, we call it a wet well, dry well, or a dry pit area where the pumps are located separately. And this pump station at number six basically looks like this exact layout here. And what we found when we excavated, typically, this can portion or where the pit pumps are located, it's usually about nine feet high. And then, in the particular case at pump station six, this circular piece is how you get down into there, was roughly 20 feet long. And if you drive around and you see a little green barrel sticking out of the ground, about three foot in diameter and two or three feet above ground, typically, this is what's buried below it. And so, what we found when we excavated here, typically, our drawing showed that this 90-degree bend was about five or six feet below ground. When we excavated, that wasn't true. Actually, was clear down at the top of the can, so we ended up digging a hole that was 20 feet deep instead of six foot deep. So, virtually, it took different equipment, a track hoe, to dig that depth, extra time, and shoring to make it safe. So, the added cost for that was roughly $6,960. And the fact that we had to dig this tremendous hole, then the connection of the force main wasn't able to be done in just a few hours like it would have been if it would have been up shallow, so we installed a tapping tee and a valve so that we could pump around with our bypass pumps. Basically, we dropped the suction hose in this wet well and pump around into the new force main with a diesel-powered pump, and lets us keep wastewater flowing and not have any downtime. And the cost for that was $1,425. Basically, that revised our total contract cost from $114,362, added a total of $16,977 with a new revised contract cost of $131,359. Basically, this project is completed this time. When we're working on these type of projects, we typically have to move fairly quick with our decisions. We ask for very detailed estimates with unit costs that we can compare back to other projects that we've done and know that we have a reasonable cost figure there. We had a budget allocation of roughly $500,000 for sanitary sewer improvements in our 2012 budget, and as you notice, we didn't spend near that $500,000. And the reason for that is we were installing manholes on Santa Fe in some lines that were dating back to 1912, and we were concerned we might run into additional problems and need some additional funds to do that work. But, actually, when we got that done and a camera in there, the lines were in great shape, so now we have some additional funds to do some more work with. Basically, it's recommended that the city commission approve change order number one for the sanitary sewer improvements, project number 12-2933, to Stevens Contractors Incorporated Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $16,997 with a revised total contract amount of $131,359. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Now, just a little bit, not, it'll come back around to this particular one, but I know you're done with this one. The future ones, do you foresee problems like this, where you have to go deeper and spend more money and use more hours, or was it just a unique case?
This was very unique. We've, this is about the sixth or seventh one that we've done a rehab on.
Right.
And typically, we find the force main right where it's supposed to be, but for some reason, when they built this back then, they just tied onto it there and angled out across the hole and filled it in, so typically, we don't find this.
Kind of hid it from you.
Out of sight, out of mind. Didn't find anybody with a 60-year-old memory to help us out, so.
Ms. Tasker, the, so the, I just have a question on the ASBILTS, because as you said, there's 60 of these. We're gonna be doing more work on these in the future. Do you anticipate any problem with the ASBILTS from the 50s and 60s when these were put in like there was here?
Basically, the majority that we've done, there hasn't been a problem, but to tell you, I won't find it again, I can't answer to that. And normally, most of these stations are in that 30 to 35-foot deep, so it's.
Okay. Because part of it, the part that kind of sticks out to me is that on these, that is the way the drawings and the contract put up in the bid documents, that the contractor will verify some of the conditions to make sure that the ASBILTS are somewhat?
And that's basically what happens here. When we get ready to do the work, they excavated down and found out there wasn't a place to make that connection. This has a very short force main. It just basically lifts the wastewater, so they were ready to move forward with this connection in short timeframe.
So, there was no way that they could tell that by popping up the cover that it wasn't six feet, that it was actually considerably deeper than that, or?
Wouldn't you say, which cover, John?
On the, yeah, right there.
Well, see, this is about 20 feet in the ground down here where that dry pit is. We've actually had ran our camera in the force main, and really, it was such a slight angle that we didn't determine that it had that drop at the end, or we ran into material that wouldn't let us get through the line. It's all cast iron line, and we've had a lot of problems with corrosion in those.
Okay. I think I misunderstood then, because it sounded like it said that the manhole portion there?
This portion here comes above the ground about three foot, and then this tube is about 20 foot long.
Right.
That takes you down into this can. The pipe I'm speaking about is over here.
Right. And is that generally how it is, 90 degrees out of the, my point being is that if the tube that you go down into is more than, considerably more than six feet, would they not have been able to figure out that that line was gonna be a lot deeper than six feet?
In all of the ones that we've worked on, this pipe comes out and vertically goes straight up to about five or six feet below grade and then follows the surface of the ground.
Okay.
And we've, I think in the last three years, I think we've rehabbed six or seven of these, and for those, things worked out pretty well. This one, for some odd reason, was just built completely different than the rest of them that we've done.
What year was this one put in? My thoughts are, is that?
1956.
My thoughts are, with that being the sort of bypass highway, when was that all put in? Around then? Similar time? I'm just wondering if they went a little deeper because it was close to what they perceived, maybe?
This is down at Cloud and Norton.
Norton and Cloud?
Oh.
The water line was at Franklin and Broadway, but the pump station?
Oh, the pump station? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm in a different spot. So, this is at, this is at, I'm sorry, Cloud and Norton.
Just south of, just south of Cloud Street, oh.
Yeah, I was trying to anticipate if it was over there. For some reason, I had that Franklin in my head from there. Okay, this is a different location.
Separate.
I was trying to figure out maybe why they did it, because I would just guess the sheer cost of digging 20 feet deep down to lay a line would be quite a bit more expensive. I would have thought that.
Well, I would say that when they dug down to install the manhole and the pump station, they had a large hole excavated out, so they just took advantage of that hole and ran the line from there as opposed to bringing it to the surface.
To the surface.
Would be my best guess.
Sure.
Because it would have been a fairly large hole to make it safe to work in, being 30-some feet deep.
And most of those are all, are most of them, you said, about 20 feet down, or?
Pretty typical to that.
Because on the tour, I know we went down in the one, and it was pretty, I think it is.
It was probably real similar to, looked just like this, I would guess, in the one you were in up there on Ohio.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of them we'll see will be in that 30-foot depth of range, and that tube will be 20, give or take 20 feet long, so they typically look that way, and typically, they would bring the force main, and they'd do all the backfill and then run the force main at the surface, but in this case, for whatever reason, that wasn't what they chose to do.
Martha, you mentioned earlier that you tried to use the TV camera in there as far as you could to get an idea, because from the TV camera, you can tell elevation and angles and some of that, so I think that's important with the thoughts on the future ones. They have in place the use of that technology to try to determine if, in fact, they're gonna run into a problem before we actually get into the construction. This one just had limitations on how far you could go, and therefore, could This one just had limitations on how far you could go, and therefore, could get to where we needed to get to to know that it had the elevation issue.
It's a six-inch diameter pipe.
Yeah.
Pretty tough. And, and short force main. We have force mains that may be 3,000 or 4,000 feet long, and you just really don't have any way to get your camera in there and do what you need to.
So, the, the point of that is, is that I'll, obviously have record drawings, and those are nice, but you also use that camera to try to figure out what the record drawings might not show, and try to foresee as much as you can before we get to the construction phase.
It's just not possible to go out there and dig 20 feet in the ground and...
Right.
...create a pretty big inconvenience for a lot of people. So, sometimes we find things we want, sometimes we find things we don't want, so when we dig in...
Oh, the joys of digging.
That's true.
In item number one, does that mean that there was no effort to locate the sewer line when the water line went in, then?
They were installed, according to the record drawings, again, they show them installed in about 1952 and 1953. And so, I really can't make any indication why they would put that water line that close to on top of the sewer line. It just, probably one crew put the sewer in and another one came by later and built, the water lines typically built last because it's shallow, and didn't pay any attention to what the other person did, because the trench would have been wider and had been excavated.
So, are we keeping better records now?
We do. We try to keep as good a records as we can. We actually have additional survey equipment, and we go out and GPS the ends of service lines and GPS valves, GPS manhole lids, trying to get a lot more accurate information today than we did back then. We just have the tools to do that, and we didn't back then, so we hope we're doing better.
Well, I wouldn't expect the, I wouldn't expect the contractor to be able to figure out how deep that is on, and everything, but I would think that there are tools that, from the engineering part of the project, that they might be able to, as Commissioner Hardy said, with the, with the water lines at least, if you want to dig in your backyard, you call Blue Stakes, and they come out and, whatever the name of the company is, but they'll come out and they'll mark where all the utilities are.
And we did locate those. The unfortunate thing is, we do our own, we located the water line and we showed it to where it's located. Actually, it shows that way on our GIS drawings, and I don't know if there was something abandoned there that they picked up, but the drawings were prepared by city staff for the engineering drawings.
The utility locates, though, Martha, those are, when you look on the ground and you see the painted lines, those tell you the separation from a horizontal perspective. You can, is there equipment, I guess one question is, is there equipment, whether we have it or not, that can allow you to know the depth of a particular pipe, depending on the material type?
There is equipment that's available for doing that. We typically, we don't have that, or we don't use that when we do locates. Typically, our locates are to identify where they are horizontally, not necessarily vertically. And then, they're within a couple of feet of each side of the pipe.
Because for the locate, the, once you know where they are horizontally, you dig with caution from that point.
That's correct.
From the surface down. So, there's really not as much interest in the depth at that point, for that purpose.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve change order number one for the sanitary sewer improvements, project number 12-2933 to Stevens Contractors, Inc., Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $16,997. That is a revised total contract amount of $131,359.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Item 8.3, authorize Stevens Contractors, Inc. to install a water main connection from Quail Meadows Estates addition to the Bonnie Ridge addition.
Ms. Tasker, again?
Again, and we're going to talk about infrastructure that's almost old enough to retire, 60 years plus. The Quail Meadows addition... What'd you do to my drawing, Melissa? There you go. The Quail Meadows addition is this area in the, I'll call it pale green. Basically, it's from Ohio Street down to Schilling Road and then over west to the railroad tracks. And that subdivision was platted in 2005, and the developer has opened up areas for development incrementally as the market conditions warranted. Currently, working on Phase Five, which is a portion of water line from about this point up to here and then down to a connection there. And that project was bid in January of 2013, and Stevens Contractors, Inc. is the contractor involved in this project. The infrastructure plans for the Phase Five addition called for tying into a line, an existing line that was located about at this point. And again, when we were out there doing the project, we found that line didn't exist. It actually stopped at this point up here along the street. What we thought was there to connect to was not there. And basically, these drawings, again, date back to 1961, and we pulled out the old actual record drawings that we could find for that, indicated the location and where it was built to, and it truly wasn't there. Our GIS drawings indicate all of that, and we dug around for a day or two looking for it and determined it wasn't there. And basically, when we did the work for this Quail Meadows addition, we had planned on some connections into the existing system for fire protection. And this connection here, we've ran it through our water modeling software, and we definitely need to make that connection to provide the fire flows that we need into the area. And it also gives us some redundancy in connection, gets us connected back to this Ohio Street line, and then also allows us to feed water into that subdivision from the south off of the Schilling Road line. So, it serves a couple of purposes for us. And with the fact that Stevens Contractor was out there working on the Quail Meadows project, we asked him to provide us a proposal for actually installing that eight-inch connection line. And the cost in his proposal was for $10,988, and that included locating the water main, roughly about 90 feet of eight-inch water main, a tapping sleeve and valve, and removal and replacement of the sidewalks and concrete pavement, and some surface and landscape restoration and traffic control. Engineering staff and utility staff took the unit prices that he provided in that proposal and compared it to several other projects that we have unit prices for, and they were comparable. And with Stevens Construction working out there at that side, he's able to get onto it in a timely manner and get the work done to get the Phase Five up in, in shape for the developer. The work will be paid for from our multi-year water line replacement project. We have a total of $4 million allocated annually, and there are sufficient funds to cover the cost for this work. Staff recommends that the city commission authorize Stevens Contractors, Inc. to install a water main connection from the Quail Meadows Estates addition to the Bonnie Ridge addition in an amount not to exceed $10,988. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
No questions for staff? Any public comment? All right, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we authorize Stevens Contractors, Inc. to install a water main connection from the Quail Meadows Estates addition to the Bonnie Ridge addition in an amount of $10,988.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Item 8.4, first reading of Charter Ordinance 37, repealing Charter Ordinance 14, exempting the city from provisions of KSA 41719 pertaining to consumption of alcoholic liquor in public places.
Mr. Shrag.
We've got two alcohol-related items on your agenda, and as if they weren't confusing enough, we thought I'd take the first one, and Mr. Bankston would take the second. I think I've got the easier one of the two. In 1977, state statute prohibited consumption of alcohol on public streets or on publicly owned property, essentially. And it did make a distinction based on population, which made it uniform and eligible for a home rule ordinance or chartering out of the requirement. So, in 1977, the city of Salina chose to adopt Charter Ordinance Number 14, which adopted local provisions as related to consumption of alcohol on public streets and publicly owned property. And to be honest, a review of the ordinance, the staff report and the minutes don't really shed a lot of light on what the intention was at the time. The timing is similar to the bicentennial center, that may very well be what the intent was at that time. More recently, then, the state statutes have been amended to uniformly apply as it relates to special vent permit, permits for consumption on public property and public streets. And last year, we adopted an ordinance that was in keeping with the state statutes, and at that time, we didn't amend this, or repeal this charter ordinance, recognizing that since the statutory provisions are now uniform, this ordinance was probably invalid or moot. But we're bringing it to you today to adopt Charter Ordinance Number 37, which repeals Charter Ordinance Number 14, and basically takes it off the books, relies on the provisions that we currently have in our ordinances as it relates to special vent permits and permits for consumption on public property. As far as your options, it somewhat goes without saying, but you could adopt Charter Ordinance Number 37, which is staff's recommendation. You could choose to postpone consideration for additional information or direction, or you could choose not to act and to leave Charter Ordinance Number 14 in place. And as I mentioned, with the statutes now uniformly applying, it probably would have no effect anyway, other than that we'd have a outdated charter ordinance remaining on the books. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Not that it's an issue, but does a charter ordinance repeal require a certain number of votes, or is it something...
Yes, that's a good point. It requires a, requires a two-thirds majority, which in your case would be four out of five, and then additionally, it is subject to petition and referendum, so, but it doesn't become effective for, until that petition and referendum period run, which is 60 days.
For future reference.
We just learned that.
Yeah. Teacher's pet.
Any other questions for Mr. Shrag? Any public comment on this? Okay, no public comment. I can go ahead and, now this one is, is this a roll call, or is this a, okay, it's first reading, okay. Go ahead and entertain a motion, please.
I move that we approve Charter Ordinance Number 37.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Item 8.5, first reading ordinance number 13, $10,697, admitting Chapter Five, Article Two and Four of the Salina Code by permitting microbreweries to engage in activities authorized by Kansas law.
Mr. Bankston.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. With the prospect of the development of microbreweries in Salina, we are, the matter before you is actually regulated by the state of Kansas, licensed by the state of Kansas, and involves the city in that we do have some current code provisions that needed to, need to be updated relative to microbreweries, and some prohibitions that need to take into consideration what state law does allow in terms of microbreweries. As in most cases, I think important to get the definitional aspects clarified. In the context of Kansas law, and the rather confusing area of the regulation of alcohol and CMB, or Cereal Malts Beverage, the definition of alcoholic liquor includes what is generally referred to as beer. And beer is defined to include more than 3.2% alcohol by weight. Point being that when we refer to beer, we are speaking of what you might here refer to as hard beer, or that which is over 3.2%, and which is governed under the laws applicable to alcoholic liquor, as distinguished from Cereal Malts Beverage, which would be that which is 3.2% or less. Another concept that we need to keep straight, now that we're dealing with microbreweries, would be the definition of domestic beer, which by Kansas law is statutorily defined as beer which contains not more than 10% alcohol by weight and which is manufactured in this state. So, with those concepts in mind, and as is outlined in the blue sheet, state law outlines specifically what a microbrewery may do. It authorizes, a microbrewery license authorizes the manufacture of between 100,000 and 15,000 barrels of domestic beer during the licensed year. It authorizes the sale to beer distributors of beer manufactured by the licensee. It authorizes the sale of unopened containers of beer manufactured by the licensee for consumption off the premises of the microbrewery. The serving free of charge on the licensed premises and at special events monitored and regulated by ABC of samples of beer manufactured by the licensee. The sale of domestic beer and other alcoholic liquor for consumption on the licensed premises if the microbrewery is also licensed as a club or a drinking establishment. And lastly, the sale of domestic beer and alcoholic liquor for consumption on other premises if the microbrewery is licensed as a caterer. Sorry to read that to you, but those are fairly precise authorizations that I wanted to be sure that everyone knew what we were speaking of. There's also provision in state law for licensing of a microbrewery packaging and warehousing facility. It has, or it would be, a microbrewery also licensed to be the microbrewery packaging and warehousing facility, which as you might imagine, in general, that refers to the transportation and storage of beer manufactured, domestic beer manufactured by the licensee. So, that's the state law statutory approach to microbreweries. We then, in looking at our current code...
I hear a but coming.
I'm sorry?
I hear a but coming.
Well, no, it's a matter of, we're not in a position to preclude microbreweries from being in Salina, Kansas. As I say, it's a function of state law that they are permitted and that they are regulated. We're not in a position to do anything in conflict with that at the local level. The first thing that we've suggested is, in our definitional section, that these definitions that we've just spoken about be updated or added depending definitions such as the domestic beer definition, microbrewery, microbrewery packaging and warehousing facility, and how it is that the definitions of retailer and sell at retail have been clarified to make it clear that those do not include the activities anticipated by a microbrewery. There's two different sets of statutes relative to those functions. So, then we move to Section 517, which has some general prohibitions relating to alcoholic liquor, that what microbreweries do would be in conflict. And we have suggested addressing that simply by making an exception, an additional exception, which would include any of the activities that a microbrewery is able to conduct as a matter of state law. So, that's what prompts that proposed new exception under Section 517. It basically says the general prohibition remains in place, but anything that a microbrewery or a microbrewery packaging and warehousing facility is allowed to do under state law, they can do in Salina, Kansas. We then move to, and as you probably noticed in your reading, there at the microbrewery, we do have the certain circumstances under which there would be consumption on premises, and then there... and then there would be sale for consumption off premises. The on premises are basically treated on par with a drinking establishment, as you might anticipate. When we are speaking of off premises consumption, the next proposed amendment to the code is designed there in section five eighteen to make the sale of domestic beer in the original unopened container to consumers for off premises consumption, which would be by a microbrewery, consistent with the local regulations relative to sale at retail for off-site consumption, relating to time and days in which sales at retail are not permitted. In other words, what is proposed would put the microbreweries on par for purposes of sale for consumption off premises with what you would normally think of as your retailers of alcoholic liquor for sale in a unopened container for consumption off premises. So the on premises, the way it's proposed, the on premises consumption would be parallel to a drinking establishment. The off premises consumption or sale for off premises consumption would be on par with your alcoholic beverage retailers locally. The last change there in five one thirty-nine is hopefully adds clarity to the matter of the local occupational or license tax. By contrast, when we're speaking about a club license or a drinking establishment license, as you might be aware, the city does have, statutorily, the city has a role in that. You have the state licensing and then there is also the process that the city handles, issues the city license through the city clerk's office, and the fee is regulated by state law. And that remains in place, that is not changed. What what we wanted to and proposed clarifying there in subpoint C under five dash one thirty-nine, we are prohibited by state law to charge that annual occupational or license tax for microbrewery. So the point in C is simply if somebody looks at that scenario where we are imposing a fee for clubs, we are imposing a fee for drinking establishments, just to clarify that the, why the situation is the way it is with microbreweries, it's just not anticipated by state law that we would impose that fee. And it makes sense because we're not in that process. We are not, as a city, involved in that licensing process. Now, the other aspect is if you're a microbrewery, you can also be licensed as a drinking establishment. So D is simply to make the point that if you're a microbrewery and you're operating as a drinking establishment, then the drinking establishment rules still apply and the fee still applies. And hopefully, if you read the whole thing, it makes some sense. But that's what prompted the proposed amendment of five dash one thirty-nine. So the thought was that if these modifications meet your approval, that the way will have been cleared for the operation of a microbrewery in Salina in conformity with state law and under state regulation. Happy to try to answer any questions.
Greg, if I was to try to paraphrase one part of this that dealt with the days and hours when the sales prohibited, today, if someone on a Sunday wishes to go into, let's say, a restaurant that serves alcoholic beverages, to have them pour that into a glass and drink it on the premises on Sunday, that's allowable in Salina, Kansas today.
Correct.
But if you were to want to go to a packaged liquor liquor store and buy the alcohol in a package and take it home with you, that is not allowable in Salina, Kansas today.
Correct.
And so the way this is set up for microbreweries is the core objective of a microbrewery, unless they get the drinking establishment license, would be to provide you with their beer that you could buy in a package and take home. This is set up to line that with the packaged liquor restriction, which means you couldn't buy it by the package, take it home on a Sunday. But if the microbrewery did get a drinking establishment license, like any drinking establishment in town, to where they could, you know, pour it and whatever you want to have it poured in that they have available and drink it right there, that would be allowable in Salina. And this is just intended to match up with the drinking establishments. So what that means is, is if you say, well, I don't know if I want to do that on Sunday, it brings in the broader Sunday question, which is what do you want to do with other drinking establishments on Sunday as well?
What do other cities like Manhattan with Little Apple Brew Pub and Lawrence with, I think it's Free State Brewing, what do they do on Sundays?
It's a good question. I'm not aware, I'd have to defer to others.
No problemo.
Can you fill your jug with beer on Sunday in those towns?
Yeah, some community, I mean, it varies from community to community. And it is, and you do have discretion as a city commission if you'd like to change the practice that we have, the law that we have in Salina today, dealing with the Sunday. That's something that you do have that discretion to address if you'd like.
Yeah, I think.
It's just never been brought up.
If we allowed that, though, would the liquor stores also have to be open on Sunday? Or would it be a special provision for microbreweries since it's a brewery?
Well, I'm going to, I would defer to Greg. I would think that you could carve out microbreweries, but we would recommend that you look at the liquor stores at the same time if you were to allow packaged liquor sales on a Sunday.
I have an issue with mandating from the city government when somebody can be open and when they can't be open. I would just, I believe that's a restraint of trade. And I feel that it's important to give store operators and store owners the ability to open whenever they want to open. And and I have a particular issue with the microbrewery because I'd hate to have somebody drive over here from Hayes on Sunday.
Right.
And assuming that it's a drinking establishment, it's that, drink the beers, oh, man, this is the best beer I've ever had. Walk up there, I want to, I want a growler of this stuff. No, I'm sorry, we can't sell you a growler.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was my concern too, because I think on a Sunday, they should be able to buy it, especially people from a different community when we're trying to get people to Sunday in our community who don't want to make them mad and.
I think to bring us.
You can't have your growler.
Yeah, all up to speed. I believe, and this was before I was on the commission, that we, the previous commissions had looked at Sunday liquor sales and it was sort of decided that the liquor retailers did not want to be open on Sunday. It was, there was really no push for open sales. Is that, is that an incorrect statement or?
There was a time that the Kansas League of Municipalities a few years ago had issued information, there was, I think, a legislative change, they provided information to cities through their league journal. And I don't, I don't recall that our commission, I defer to Greg or others, but I don't recall that they took it up formally. I think it was basically something that was discussed, maybe very informally at one point in time of if there's interest, would you like staff to do any work, let us know. There never was interest, so it really just wasn't a topic at the time. I don't recall it being really debated or anything like that.
So are you saying there's interest, is that what you're saying, Randall?
I think, well, what I'm saying is, I don't know if there's interest, but why not give people that option to be open? They don't have to be open. I had a business that was closed on Sunday when competitors were open. Didn't bother me.
Yeah.
But I do know, I remember more than one Fourth of July on a Monday when I forgot to go to the liquor store on Saturday and then all of a sudden, uh-oh, what do I do now? Well, I think it, it's a win-win, it's a win for the consumer, it's win for the store owner.
Well, they closed on Independence Day anyway, according to this.
Well, that's what he said, he missed it on a Sunday.
I mean, whether it's on a Sunday or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, I think it brings up one question that I hadn't thought of prior, and that is, what does the current law say to buying, say you went to an existing bar now and bought a bottle of beer to go?
You can't.
Can you do that?
Yeah, state law doesn't allow that.
Because I think that that probably would be more of an issue to say, I want to buy beer on the premises and go, and that's probably, that's something that the microbreweries can already do that apparently you can't do at another, at any other drinking establishment. You can't buy a beer to go.
I suppose that would be another license. You could get a retailer's license, but I don't know that any drinking establishments are motivated to.
To do that.
Retailer's license, because they're, they're selling a product that you could buy at the liquor store. The uniqueness of the microbrewery is.
But if you open the sale up for Sunday to a microbrewery, it's not something that anybody else would be.
That's true.
Currently, they kind of have an advantage over anybody else.
Yes, that's true.
Somebody could just go in there and give me a six-pack to go and have an advantage over currently an existing business.
It would seem to me that really the question is two, that one, the thought is, which you bring up, really an excellent example of, of the person who comes from out of town at the microbrewery and does that, I think this, that, which is, which is a good idea. And again, under this Kansas law, that's allowed. I think the second part of that is, do we want to look at just opening Sunday liquor stores to retailers? Again, it would be their option to opt in or out, but I, because you're kind of pointing out that it could be an unfair advantage to the, to the microbrewery, maybe that's worth going back and looking, which a lot of this language in our amendment is specifically because we have non-Sunday retail, retail liquor sales, is that kind of the reason of this ordinance?
Yeah, our thought was to start with matching it up, so in fairness to all, the thought being that if you, if you should choose to approve adding microbreweries, we assume you probably would do that, that if you approve it in the way it is today, it's on the same playing field as the other packaged stores for that purpose. And if you did that, we could then go and schedule, I think you'd want to schedule a public hearing, get word out of that. There's, there's varying opinions and thoughts and it's free to know those on the broader question. And then if you should choose to change and provide packaged liquor sales on Sunday, at that point, it would, we would draw it upward, apply to all, including microbreweries and other liquor stores. So that way, the timing would be with all.
I figure if the Catholic Church can drink on Sunday, why can't we?
Seeing as this microbrewery will not be open probably until September.
We have time.
Would, well, we have time, but I was just wondering, we're going to have to go back and amend this thing if we pass it the way it is now. Would, would there be a problem with passing it without that modification to section five eighteen related to the, the sale on Sunday? And, and then next week, the liquor store owners come in and say, well, we want to be open now.
I, I think you're assuming that the ordinance would pass that made sales available on Sundays, because if it didn't, then we'd have to come back and add that into this amendment. So I think that bringing it up to par and on a level field with everything else is probably the, probably the best way to do it at this point.
I'd go with you on that one.
Okay.
I mean, I see the efficiency of what you're saying. I mean, my thought would be table it, have the discussion on the Sunday sales, then just do it all at one time, but I think we're here today.
Well, if we have a public hearing, I think that.
Greg, what would you suggest?
If I may, if it's helpful, there's a couple of, of microbrewery projects underway that this is time sensitive for them.
Sure, sure.
Acting today and leaving yourself the option to expand it later is probably going to be the most responsive to what they'd like.
Yeah, and I think the, you're, you're, the city manager is correct, getting the public involved and getting their, their thoughts on this is probably a, a good idea rather than, and, and, and the liquor stores, the packaged liquor stores as well, they may want to, again, they may come in and say, hey, please don't pass that ordinance. We don't know.
I would like.
We don't, we're right, we may not, they may not want to work on Sunday, so.
I would like it that the microbreweries can sell them on Sundays.
On the packaged?
Right, correct.
Amen.
Yes. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure Little Apple Brew Pub does, I lived in Manhattan, I don't know about the Lawrence, does Hayes?
Sunday, Sunday retail.
Lawrence sells on Sunday.
They do.
Oh, yeah.
The, the brew pubs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the one in Hayes does? I may have added the one in Hayes, but not on Sunday.
I believe they do.
In Lawrence and Manhattan, retail sales across the board are permissible on Sunday.
On Sunday.
Douglas County the same way.
Right. I do want the microbrewery to be able to sell their stuff on Sundays, because I don't think that's fair for a microbrewery not to be able to sell their, their product to the public on a Sunday.
Well, if, if the microbrewery, if you pass it as it is today, as it's recommended, they could not sell the pack, they could sell it in a package on Sunday, just like you couldn't buy from any other liquor store on Sunday. If they become a drinking establishment, you could go in and have a drink from the microbrewery on a Sunday, just like drinking establishments could.
Right.
So what we, what we're proposing today puts them equal in essence to what the drinking establishments and the packaged liquor folks do today. You, you could, I mean, I, I would defer to Greg, I believe you, we could make the modification, you could allow the microbrewery to sell in a package on Sunday before anybody else. You may or may not, I'm not sure what the public response would be to that, because you'd be jumping them out ahead. And that's just the only reason that we put it like this. We said, put it at an equal playing field and then look at the entire playing field at one time.
But it's not a.
It's your choice, so.
It's not a level playing field, though, because you'll have, especially if it's a drinking establishment, I don't know what the chances are it's going to be. But if it is, then it's, it's a different category than a packaged liquor store, because you don't go in there and have drinks.
Right.
And then want to buy something.
They can become a drinking establishment if they choose, and then at that point, they're on a level playing field with the other drinking establishments, so all the rules are the same from that perspective.
Right.
Except they can't sell on Sunday.
Right.
Drinking establishment, you can.
Could sell for, for consumption, but not out of, not out of door, not out, out of the door.
But that's what a microbrewery is going to be doing.
Drinking is, just if you want to differentiate, you've got, take the package away, unopened, and the drinking establishment, which is right there on the premises. If they want to become a drinking establishment, they can do just like the other drinking establishments. That's a really easy thing for them to do. It's their choice, but they can do that.
Sure.
What we're talking about is the unopened container. Today, if you said, well, we don't want to go with, with the recommendation, we'd like to allow them to sell the unopened containers, someone could take that with them, take it home. Today, that's fine, but the other, but you can't buy any of the other alcohol in town in that way until you change the bigger picture.
Right.
So the question is, do you want to time it the same? Or do you want to put the microbrewery out in front on the packaged liquor?
So we're not allowing them to be open on Sunday?
No, 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 we are.
Well, not.
Not today.
Not today.
Oh, the liquor stores, I'm sorry, liquor stores.
No.
Yeah, right, right.
The microbrewery, it cannot be open on Sunday, basically, because all they're doing is selling an open product.
Unless they become a drinking establishment.
And if they're a drinking establishment, right.
Correct. They're going to be treated the same as the packaged liquor store.
Right.
And you've got a couple of different likely business models. One is the microbrew and they are drinking establishment that sells their brew and other manufacturers, you know, on a regular basis. The other model is they are a microbrewery exclusive to their own product and they sell it by the drink and they sell it packaged. And in that scenario, on Sunday, they would be limited to selling by the drink, which keeps them consistent with all the other retailers in town.
Right. I like the idea where, where the two of you are thinking about the off sale, but being in this political thing that we are, I think it's probably smart at this stage to, to pass this and then come back and revisit with some public knowledge that there will be a meeting discussing this, open up to the public just to be, let, let them have their opportunity. I'm not saying my opinion will change in the public, it rarely does, but, but I.
It's always wise to give the public the option.
That's right.
To come and visit about it.
That's right. So, so I think it's probably.
Change your mind, you never know.
Or the owner of the microbrewery.
Exactly.
Come and speak to us about it as well.
And again, I, I definitely support what, what both of you are saying. I think it, it makes sense. Your example was very good. I've always been curious about Sunday liquor sales. I know, I happen to be for a drive in Harrington, and they're doing a lot of business on Sunday, so.
You can go into a restaurant, order a bottle of wine on a Sunday here in town and take it home with you, just have it re-corked. So, you know, it's a very thin line on what you can and can't do here.
And I, I tend to agree with what Commissioner Hardy said, and that is, it is always difficult to regulate business practices to the degree of hourly levels. I mean, zoning, things like that, that's one thing, but to getting there and talking about what hours and times and things is always a little difficult for me as well, from a governmental standpoint. But I definitely think we want to get the public involved.
And all I'm saying is, you know, even if they, twenty-five people show up, say, no, don't, don't open on Sunday because we don't want to be open. I'm not saying.
Right.
That, that, they're wanting us to tell them what they can do or not do, and I don't think that's our job.
It's up to that owner.
We'll just say, well, don't open. Easy.
And we can, we can bring that broader question back to you very quickly, because legislatively, it's an easy item.
Yeah.
Politically, it may or may not be, we don't know.
Right.
You'll just have to see on that.
I, I think Commissioner Crawford's right, whenever you can involve the public on these types of decisions, probably a reasonable expectation on their part that we would open up with some foreknowledge, so.
Don't you remember the forums we?
Yeah, some issues.
A comment from the audience. A comment from the audience?
My name is Tracy Sin, I live at 340 and a half, South Connecticut. Now, as a microbrewer, are they going to be like a bar type of business, or is, will be a retail sell, point of sales?
It's still to be determined, correct? Because they have a couple of different models.
Now, they can do that on Sunday, the liquor store, why can't they do the same, why can't they open on Sunday as well? It wouldn't be fair to the, to the business owner out there that has the same type of liquor store and, and serving liquors, why can't they have the same rights as microbrewers? If, if they catering as a point of sale, meaning they can get a six-pack of beers and go home with it on Sundays, and why can't the people of, that own the liquor store has the right to do the same thing, opening on Sundays?
And I think that's the bigger question. I think that, I think that's what we're saying, that maybe that's worth opening to the public to decide.
Because I, I wouldn't mind having a Robert Mondavi at home every now and then with a glass on Sunday. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be fair to me to, to go to one place that is accessible to one person, particular business, to have a six-pack out of their place, but yet I can't go to a liquor store and get the same amount of beer and go home and drink at the same time.
Sure.
At my comfort, my comfort, my home, instead of going to a bar, because I'm not a bar person.
Well, come back to the next meeting when we discuss it.
When we discuss it.
And actually, given that you have a break coming up, that's two weeks, that's pretty adequate time if you'd like to bring that back at your next meeting.
I think so.
Table it.
And samples.
And samples! Hey, can we just pass another ordinance?
Those require another amendment.
That's why they were in that order.
Yeah. Whew, you may want to put the easy stuff on the, on the docket that day.
Yeah, make it an easy, like, here midnight.
I don't know that two weeks is, is two weeks, I mean, are we talking about two weeks to come back and figure out something on the overall thing, or just on this particular item? Because this particular item is just bringing everything equally.
Yeah, no, no, I think today will, like, at least my, my intention is to, to move and hopefully see this pass, and then readdress the Sunday sales on a nut, on the two-week.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at, at Greg, but I think that if you approve this as it's recommended on first reading today, you're not going to deal with second reading for two weeks. We could see how that's placed on the agenda with the other question. At that point, you, we could, I would think in the second reading, we could amend, we could give them an option-
Right.
-to eliminate the exception.
Yeah.
If you want to go that way with the other packaged alcohol.
Within amendment for the second reading.
Sure.
So that'd be pretty easy.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Samples.
No more questions from staff or from the audience? I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 13-10697, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Articles 2 and 4 of the Salina Code by permitting microbreweries to engage in activities authorized by Kansas law. Do I need to spell out the changes in the def, in the sections at all, or are we fine with that?
No, I think that's fine.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we move other business in front of executive session at this time.
Okay. All those in favor of moving other business before we go into our executive session?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any other business we'd like to bring up?
Just real quick with that, was there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, good, thank you for the-
I think they went right from- We're still thinking about beer.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I move that we move other business before, I automate point six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move other business in front of executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone have any other business?
I do.
Sure.
I, it's close to Memorial Day and, and the run for the wall that we've read about in the Salina Journal, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Rotarians for having Bill Tally. If any of you read that, he was a speaker at the Rotarian luncheon this month. He is a retired colonel in the Air Force who flew over north Vietnam during the Vietnam War. He was shot down and told of his experiences in Vietnam as a POW. Unfortunately, I was not there, I'm not a Rotarian, but I thank the Journal for carrying that story, and thank Bill Tally for his service. Many young people don't remember the Vietnam War. Many young colleagues of mine don't remember the Vietnam War. I think it's important that we remember our history, especially now that we're close to Memorial Day, Poppy Day, and all of these events, that we also remember the Vietnam War. Those fellows came back and didn't come back to, to welcomes and welcome hero and waving flags. So I just want to remember those for the people at home today.
Good.
Any other business?
I'm Madam Mayor. I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:30 PM.
Second.[1785.53]